We made up some of that through the LOV logo option. But when you get down to it, it comes down to we've lost six million dollars total. Cut our budget two percent and really cut us a million dollars. So that's what we're talking about. You're not seeing a lot of excuses here. You're seeing some really good things this evening. Hardworking teachers, working hard for the kids. And there are several classes. I would guess there's over thirty classes at the high school that have over thirty kids on it?
Oh, yeah.
Every bit of. So it's, no, it's not a facility issue. It is a revenue, lack of revenue coming in at the district of what we had four years ago. I don't know about you, but when I go fill my car up to gas, it costs more now than it did four years ago. When I go to the grocery store, it costs more. Same with our teachers and same with all of our, you know, with compensation for our staff. Stayed pretty stagnant over the last four years. In essence, they're losing. Come January, everybody in the district took a one percent cut because Capers takes one percent more down to fund Capers or state return. Everybody took a one percent cut right there across the board. So that's a big elephant in the room, folks. It really is.
That's sort of the point, of course, is we have so much opportunity and there's so many exciting things happening. And we have so much opportunity to grow that. Even the public-private things that you mentioned earlier that are happening great, volunteering teachers to make sure the kids are successful. I mean, there's so many things that are, you know, two thumbs up. But when you have those sets in the class, it's great to hear we're retaining kids. I mean, that's our goal. But at some point, you're gonna, we are going to be critical mass, if you will. And there's mental health of the teachers. I mean, there's all these aspects of just trying to do everything. And at some point in time, I mean, it's just difficult.
And many of the things that the teachers have talked about this evening, they're doing after-school hours, they're doing after-contracted hours for kids. They're going beyond the negotiated agreement. They're volunteering their time for the kids in this community to help them. And I haven't heard any excuses tonight. I've heard results.
Well, but Laura, I think you can bring that up as an important discussion item to get out there. Because we all are aware of it, but sometimes it just, we need to remind each other of exactly where we're at, how lean we actually are running. And I think we are a critical mass when you, when you look at that.
And one of the board's goals, and we are looking at scheduling, I don't know if you all realize it or not, having change scheduling to create more manpower. And you can't do that, but it, you know, that's one thing we're looking at because we are knowing that we have to be leaner in everything we do and how we run our building and how we use our resources. So we're looking at it right now because we know it's on us.
Well, thank you for your work, Ms. Morales. I do want to comment, your parent-teacher conferences were all held in the cafeteria. And from a parent's perspective, you still maintain integrity of the academies by the location of how you had everybody set up. But I was with you at a camp, at the conference, we did, of course, we had both parents there. We knocked out one student's conferences in thirty-five minutes. It was very parent-friendly.
Right. And we're gonna continue that because the comments I have from the parents were just, you know, we, one parent told me the last time it took them three hours and said it took me an hour to do it. I can see who's busy, who's not busy. I can run that room.
And you still feel private and it's just, you feel a little funny looking around where you're supposed to go, but we all look a little funny sometimes. It's worth it if you save hours.
And we'll get better at that. I mean, that was our first time at doing it in that business, so.
No, that was a great change, so. Anyway, thank you. Keep up the good work, guys. All right. Dr. Etha, we're on to new business. Are you going to introduce the calendar?
Renee Scott here is in.
Renee, oh, I'm sorry, Renee.
And she was on the calendar committee. And she will kind of give you an overview of the traditional calendar, any other questions that you have, and share with you the vote that the staff did last week or so.
We were charged with, as is normal, to come up with a traditional calendar. And we came up with two options and put that to vote, and traditional calendar draft B1, which I believe you have a copy of. And then we were charged with the option of creating a, an alternative type of calendar too. And that consisted of, starting in September, once a month, teachers could get some early release time to have both professional development as well as collaboration time. And that went to vote up against the traditional calendar. And the traditional calendar won with votes three hundred and ninety-two to two hundred and thirty-seven. So it was a little tighter of a vote than in the past, but still a clear majority went with the traditional calendar. In terms of the traditional calendar, there were just a few minor changes this year or for next year's calendar. This year, we had four new teacher in-service and/or workdays and four returning teacher, four or five returning and new teacher, sorry, veteran teacher or all teacher days at the beginning of the year. Next year, we plan to have three new teacher in-service workdays and four all-staff days at the beginning of the year. So we cut or reduce that by one and then spread that out a little bit more throughout the year. For example, on September twenty-sixth of next year, our new teachers will have an additional in-service day that was cut from the beginning of the year. The calendar committee discussion was, we throw so much at them the first of the year, and then after they've had about a month, six weeks to experience it, they have a lot more questions or need to be reinforced. And so that day will be a good time to do that. Okay, what, what are you saying that we need to provide more support with? And then we are trying something a little different with returning teachers or all-staff. We have a day, which is May fourth next year, scheduled as a professional development in-service day. And the discussion around that was, we do so much throughout the year with testing and gathering data, but we never end the year with a good review of that data. And so a lot of times, you think when you hit May, you're finished. And this will give us an opportunity to look at the data and say, what can we do still this last month of school? And then more importantly, how can we use this data to start off the year more effectively in terms of helping with student achievement? We're going to try it. We haven't tried that before. But those are the main two changes to the traditional draft that was voted on by all staff. Any questions about the calendar? This is my third year on the committee, and so every year we've proposed non-traditional calendar, the votes increased a little bit more, but we still aren't very much.
Did you have good community involvement in, not just community, but committee involvement?
Yeah, at the actual committee meetings, all of the, the community members came, attended the meetings very well and have some good ideas. I mean, we asked, like, the YMCA attends our meetings. Whole Family Superintendent attended a meeting and gave us a great idea in terms of how to utilize some extra minutes on the alternative draft, that's just a perspective we have thought of. So, yeah, it's, it's really neat. It's a great process, but it's also a pull-your-air-out process.
When you go through the voting process, now that we're, obviously, the teachers have spoken on what they would consider the traditional calendar this year, but are we getting feedback on maybe, you know, why they voted the way they did? Or, you know, is it something like, it wasn't Friday wasn't the day that they would have picked to do the collaboration time or?
The calendar committee really throws all of those scenarios around, like, would Wednesday be better because there aren't activities? But then that interferes with early childhood. That splits up their week pretty dramatically. And so we really try to come up with the best day for that. I think, number one, it's fear. That's a big change.
Yeah.
Our staff has to then find daycare and pickup procedures. We worry about parents who aren't in the, the flow of that routine change, not having the correct arrangement. So I think, number one, it's fear, but, but those are valid concerns as well.
But when they do the survey, is there a comment section or place where feedbacks, if the next year's committee can use it?
Yes, and everything gets thrown out there in this.
One thing I know Dr. Carlin discussed with us was, we don't know what, not names, but maybe what grade level or what building or something that some of these votes came from.
Right.
I know every faculty meeting we attend at the high school, everybody's screaming for, "We need time to meet."
Yes.
And so I would suspect that a lot of the two-thirty-seven votes for the alternative calendar came from high school students or teachers.
And I don't know, we didn't get the final breakdown as a committee.
Yeah, I think you said that we didn't do that this year, but that might be something to look for if it's possible with the software that we use for the survey. That would be great to find out, not to manipulate it or put anybody on the spot, but just for, just for knowledge, big data. I've been around Dr. Dennis long enough, I just want that. Do you have any other questions on the?
I just wondered in mind of what Dr. Hopkins said, is there a way to, to look at this proposed calendar and try to build, maybe look at other ways to, to get collaboration and professional development type time in there?
With the current calendar that we have?
That we've voted on.
The traditional that we've voted on? With negotiated agreement, your minutes in the day are pretty mapped out in terms of personal plan time and professional learning time. And so for, at the high school, for example, our PLC time is used for academies to meet, which is awesome. But that doesn't open up a lot of time for departments to meet. So what might be happening, like, for example, in my academy, I have one world history teacher in trades and two in health. And they don't have an opportunity to collaborate because they don't have common time. So it, it makes, we've done a pretty good job on in-service days, allowing some time. But if you look on the calendar, those days are pretty spread out. When you're talking units of study, time is, time is at the essence.
Why would we have them broke up like that?
Because we are meeting with a common set of students, so we want to develop lessons that are collaborative. For example, our.
What I mean is, why do we have them structured that way, where they, we have that challenge between?
There's just no way on an eight-period day, on a block schedule, to have, to have them, have them have both a PLC collaboration time with academies and contact time. There's, it's just, it's not really possible.
Good question.
Yeah. Well, I was on the calendar committee as well. I think I missed maybe two, but the discussions that were there, trying to hammer this out, was great. One thing I know that everyone talked about and wanted to have accomplished, and they got really close, was evening, evening out the number of days in the first semester and then the second semester. And if you'll look in the bottom right-hand corner, it'll show that we have eighty-six point five days in the first half, or first semester, and eighty-eight days in the second semester, which I think will help a lot with regard to testing. So you have, because a lot of times, you have those extra days at the end of the year, but you've already tested and you're thinking, oh, I just wish I could have put those in August so I could have that much more time to work with the students. So I was really excited to see that and hearing some of the community members talk as well and making sure that their input was made was really great. This is the first time I've sat on that committee and it was a really good experience. Even with the alternative calendar, you know, at one point, everybody's like, well, it seems like everybody's spoken, let's not do the alternative calendar. You know, but we pushed forward and came up with some really good ideas on how to do it. And the numbers keep creeping up as to whether or not we're gonna do it that way. So.
Good comments.
If I could, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we adopt it, since it is a traditional calendar and it was so overwhelmingly approved by the teachers. I know this was just a first reading and we could probably table the motion, but I know as a parent, I'd like to know when my kids are starting in school, sooner than later. So is that an option? That's a motion. Raise your second. Motion by Laura, second by Jean. Any discussion? Like Laura said, traditionally, we would hear a presentation on this and then we would take action at the following meeting. Our next meeting is actually what I consider a payables meeting. It's on seven-thirty in the morning on Friday, March fourteenth. So there's not gonna be a lot of time for discussion. Everybody's gonna be heading off to get to work for that meeting. So I don't see a reason not to put this, to vote tonight as, as it's been moved and seconded. So I'm in favor.
And as part of the discussion, I would just wonder if it might be possible to hear from the administration before we vote?
Sure, we vote, sure.
Administration's calling you. I always look at, we always look at to see if the process was followed. And I've been in constant dialogue with, with Dr. Carlin, Dr. Carlin, all the way through the process. And I believe that it was. And, and I think the vote was taken, supported, I can support the recommendation of the teachers on the, on the calendar that was selected. So it would be my recommendation that you approve the traditional calendar as presented. I'm okay with it being approved this evening. I'm okay with it being approved a couple of weeks from now. But we definitely need, if we don't get it tonight, we definitely need the calendar set in a couple of weeks because there's a lot of work to be done. Not only do families need to know, and teachers need to know, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done through technology to get this calendar born for next year. A lot of fight goes into it.
I don't want any of us to put a brush and make a decision, but I think a decision is inevitable, we're gonna have to make one, we're seeing it anyway. And I don't foresee us going against the wishes of the teachers, so.
All right.
All right, with that being said, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of adopting the traditional calendar for the 2014-15 school year as presented, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you. Open board discussion. Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I'd just like to say, I think it's great that we're ready to approve that calendar this evening because I know a lot of people try to plan their summer and sometimes camps and activities go into August and you want to know when that's, what the start date is. So I think it'll be really helpful to the community and to the parents to know, to know when those, those dates are, so.
One thing I failed to mention is, the calendar has to also be adaptable to negotiate agreement. That's another reason for, for making the recommendation this evening is because it was and is negotiated agreement and the law. So GCA was involved, and there are also members on the, of the calendar committee as well that had a part in that committee.
If I could, yes. First, I'm, just as a, I don't know, citizen standpoint, there is a special election tomorrow. So please remember to go out and vote tomorrow, since it's kind of an odd time to be in the habit. Just remember that, it's about the quarter cent sales tax. And then also, if I could, talk about the legislative session.
Please do.
It was very interesting. I've testified once before and it was quite a different situation. Before, there were only two of us who were testifying, and we both testified, and then we ended up almost having a roundtable discussion with the legislators about what many might see as an obscure juvenile law. This time, I knew it would be different when Dr. Dennis texted me and said, "There's a protest outside the hearing room. You might want to come directly to the hearing room." And I told that to my husband, and he's like, "There's that many people?" Yes. You know, from a teacher's perspective, you know, talking to him, his response was, "Why is it this big of a deal? I don't understand because these are good things. I'm teaching people more. I feel like I have more to teach. I don't understand what the big deal is." Listening to the people who testified, and I do have to thank Tom Krebs for giving me his time because somehow I got left off the list. So even for ninety seconds, better than none. There seemed to be basically three main themes that were going on, but the overall theme to me was inconsistency. One theme that was consistent was data collection and concern about collecting data, concerned about the security of that. And, you know, in this day and age, especially with the Target thing that happened, I can understand why parents would be concerned. But from my understanding of the data collection, there's nothing there that you would be able to steal someone's identity from. And I think we've been collecting data since data could be collected. So it's not something that's Common Core specific. How would we know the AYP scores for No Child Left Behind if we didn't collect data? This second theme seemed to be with regard to implementation. Most of the, there were two people who testified that we were taking literature out of classrooms and how dare we do that? And the others who testified, half said math was too easy and the other half said math was too hard. And they brought their child's homework to the Kansas Legislature to try to show the Kansas Legislature why the homework was too hard. To me, that's an implementation issue and something that's, I would love to have the parents come and talk here. But we've never had a parent come to one of our board meetings and say, "I'm having problems with my child's math homework." You know, so I think it needs to be something that's handled more locally, in my opinion. The third one is kind of going along with that is what's top-down. We heard top-down quite a bit. I've heard one person define top-down as, it started in high school and now we're forcing kindergartners to use it, so it's top-down. And then I've heard other people define top-down as President Obama's making this happen. So again, I'm not exactly sure how to address that since they have two different definitions of what top-down is. I was looking at the Engage New York website recently, which we are using for our math curriculum. And I think one teacher, and it was a teacher who was on the video, summarized it fairly well, that, of course, we started with high school. We know where we need to get them, and then we need to work our way down to see where we need to start. So in my mind, it was almost like writing a paper. You don't start with introduction. You write the body of it first and then you go back. And then we had approximately four teachers, Dr. Dennis, I think, who were authors of Common Core there who testified. And one specifically said, "I felt no pressure to adopt the Common Core standards. I was there. We were trying to decide what is best for Kansas, and this is what we decided was best." But I think we had, the two best who testified, and I wish I could have seen their entire testimony, were teachers. And I don't remember their names now, but one of them is the 2013 Kansas Teacher of the Year. And she explained the difference between the Holocaust unit that she taught under No Child Left Behind and the Holocaust unit that she teaches now. Before, they read a condensed version of the Diary of Anne Frank, a condensed version of The Hiding Place by Corey Ten Boom. Boom, one other book and that was it. Done with the Holocaust. Now, they're reading the full versions of those books. They are communicating through technology with other schools in the United States and one in China. And they're having a little bit of a competition because the Chinese students think they're better than the American students. They're comparing it with Berlin issues, they're comparing it with Syria, they're comparing it with what's going on in North Korea. And they're able to do all of this through Common Core where they couldn't do it under No Child Left Behind. Another teacher, who was a father, he said, "Apparently, it's rubbing off because his daughter is teaching hipper Barbies in the same fashion." And he said, "There's only so much twinkle-twinkle little star that you can take." And eventually moved on to, well, we brought an auctioneer in to teach about the different increments in math. So he was trying to sell his self up. He went from one to two, two to three, and then once they got up to ten, they started going into increments of five until they got up to fifty and then they went into tens. Well, that night, he told his daughter, "You're gonna need to start getting ready. Your mom's gonna be home in about ten minutes." And he, the little girl said, "Ten? How about fifteen? How about fifteen? How about twenty? How about twenty? How about twenty-five?" And just went on with what the auctioneer had done that same day.
I'm not sure I'd like that.
His response to that was, "Take that twinkle-twinkle little star." But it was, I thought, everything that the people who were opposing the bill, which are the proponents of Common Core, just make sure that's clear because the bill is asking to declare Common Core null and void, all had data and facts and seemed very consistent in what, what it is that they were having to say. One person from the other side said that you shouldn't be listening to them because they're all being paid to be here today and they're going to lose their jobs if they don't say what they're saying. Most of them were from the Hutchinson School District, and I don't think Dr. Kiplinger would probably do that to them. But one thing I didn't get a chance to say was, you know, I'm a small business owner. I took a day out to be there. Probably to Dr. Etha's chagrin, I did not accept the mileage money to be there or any money at all to be there. Yes, my husband did get a professional day, but we probably lost more than we could have made that day because I was on the road. But that's how strongly I feel in Common Core. So for those who don't think that parents are supporting it, I'm a parent, I support it, and I'm a small business owner, and I think it's right for our small businesses. So I.
We did a very nice, very apparent, and not only that, but your articulation.
You're so passionate, too. I love it.
Yeah. And I thought the telegram did a wonderful job of interviewing you and communicating that too, some of the same points that you made, so.
Thank you, Angie.
It's been very, very effective and, and I should thank you for your time.
All right, any other open discussion comments?
That was the big one. And of course, there are some other issues in the form of the legislature that affects you, things like elections and, and I think we need to keep monitoring that stuff.
That did come out of committee four and three, I believe, for seventy-six. It was a very narrow margin. Tomorrow at one-thirty is our statewide.
You know, the model schools are gonna be selected.
Oh, yes, yes.
Taylor's graciously monitoring.
Yes, sorry.
We need one of the board members because this is gonna take place on March eleventh.
We're selecting a committee to select two model schools from our district.
What day is that?
March.
Well, let me just announce this because we do have a meeting here. We have been selected by Bill Daggett and ICLE from the International Center for.
Leadership and Education.
Leadership to present at the National Model Schools Conference in Orlando, Florida in late June. And when we went last year to the national conference, we saw several schools present And when we went last year to the national conference, we saw several schools present individually as model schools. Our district has a different perception here, we are striving to become a model district. We already have several model schools. We've been invited to present at this conference, this will give us an opportunity to showcase several of our teachers. It'll give an opportunity to showcase three of our schools, an elementary school, a middle school, of course, the high school. So, at this conference, they will see, uh, a sample of what we're doing, District One. Now, we're not a model district yet, but we do have several model schools and I'm, I'm hoping in five to ten years, we will become a model district. That's not the way this is being approached nationally, it's being approached, well, this school is doing great, that school is doing great. Well, I'm responsible for eighteen schools in this district and I want them all to do great because we've got seventy-six hundred kids that deserve to do great at a, at a chief of office. So, what we're doing, we, we presented this challenge out to our elementaries and our middle schools and the high school and they are putting together presentations right now, I don't know how many of them will participate, but I'm guessing most of them will. And on the Monday on the-
Tuesday the eleventh.
Tuesday the eleventh, they will be giving their presentations, there'll be a rubric that will go by and I'm asking two board members to be a part of the judging component, Dr. Dennis will be on there, I'll be on there, Leanne will be as well and probably Dr. Carr. And the three schools will emerge. Obviously, the high school will emerge because we've only got one high school, but there'll be some competition, a little friendly competition between the middle schools and the elementaries to see which one of those will emerge to present. And I envision this, uh, once the presentation is put together, it'll be one presentation representing three different levels here, three different schools. We will present to SAC, the Superintendent Advisory Committee, probably hone the presentation because it can only be an hour and fifteen minutes. Then we'll bring the presentation to the board so that you can hear the presentation, we'll certainly welcome your suggestions for improvement and then we'll be ready to present at, uh, in the latter part of June in Orlando, Florida. But this is a great opportunity to showcase our district, to showcase our teachers and the quality of work that they're doing for kids as well as our administrators' district.
March eleventh, Tuesday, would that be morning, afternoon?
Morning.
Morning.
Seven-thirty is start time and we'll go, we'll be done certainly by one.
Okay. And Tim, does that time commitment still work for you?
Let me check, I got a commitment that I made today, I, I thought this was going to be like after school, so I'll make a phone call more and I'll call you personally. I should be able to.
Great.
I think I should be able to.
Good. Does anyone else have an interest in serving on that committee along with Tim?
I have an interest, I just have a conflict.
Okay. Jean? Or I need to ask, you've given up so much of your personal time lately.
Um, I have something in the morning and I have something at one-thirty, so if you absolutely need me, I can move the thing in the morning, but I can't move the thing at one-thirty, so.
And I know Alex is busy with work requirements and deadlines. I'm available that morning, so let's, uh, Tim, number one, um, after you check your calendar, um, either Laura or I, probably me second, if you can't make it, maybe Laura and I, um, if, but you're number one, if you, uh, can work it out.
I'll go.
Great, thank you, thanks for explaining it after anything. I just wanted to also know that this is kind of a silly little thing, but it's, we've, um, Kansas has been hit by tornadoes, specifically schools, to a, um, terrible level in the recent past and tomorrow, we're having a statewide tornado drill at one-thirty, so just so everybody's aware, personally, professionally, something really to take seriously, we, we all know that, but, um, when you hear the sirens go off, you'll know why, so. And if it's inclement weather, they're going to reschedule it, I think, to Thursday, but just saying. Any other, um, open discussion items? That being said, we need to move to go to executive session. Um, I'm sorry, I can't be here. Next board meeting will be held in this room on Friday, March fourteenth, two thousand fourteen, at seven-thirty AM. And do the executive session, uh, move, motion.
I'm sure I know that we move into executive session for twenty minutes beginning at eight o'clock, um, for matters relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a person as a student, because if this matter were discussed in open session, it might invade the privacy of those discussed.
Motion by Laura, second by Mark, all those in favor to the board meeting. Motion carries, we'll reconvene in open session at eight-twenty and we'll be in a conference room across the hall. Thank you for giving us some time to take a break.